Okay, good morning. It's February 5th, nine o'clock. We'll call the Upson County Board of Commissioners work session to order. We have a form. Any opening comments for anyone? Nope? No? Okay, I guess we can just straight into new business. First item on the agenda is discussion of clean services for the Justice Center.
And Alan, I'm going to like, you go ahead and just take that from the top.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we, Paul and I actually had a catch on before Paul came part of the Facilities Department. Seth and I began discussing this and how we were going to be able to keep the New Justice Center properly clean, given its size and given the amount of personnel that we currently had at facilities. We just barely have enough to do the very basic, if you will, cleaning in the main building and other facilities that we're responsible for. And a lot of times that was mainly just picking up the trash, but we knew that that wasn't going to be the level. We needed to provide cleaning in this brand new facility. So, we did reach out to several companies that provide this janitorial service. We also reached out, there's a young lady that owns her own company in Thomasville, by the name of Central Georgia. And we reached out to JamPro and another company called Georgia Facility Services. We received quotes from them, and this goes back, actually, these quotes probably came in in late October, early November. And we evaluated the price of these quotes. And also took a look at what it would cost us to hire three new employees on a full-time basis. And so, in the first years, it is pretty close, what it would cost us to hire three new people, salary plus an estimated, you know, factor for benefits, compared to what it would cost us to say, hire JamPro for, you know, under a year contract. But then after that, you know, you're going to have increases depending on the increases that we grant for, or you all approve for employees, you're going to have that additional cost. The other thing that we run into is with jobs of this nature and at the salary levels, obviously, for this role, it's really hard, has proven hard for us to find people to fill those positions that we can hang on to for any length of time. And so, and I'll tell you, because we needed to get some people in there right away and start keeping that facility clean, we did ask JamPro to service us on a, one month at a time. So, they've been cleaning since January. I extended that to the end of February till I had a chance to meet with you all and discuss this option. They have had difficulties. In fact, they just had to let one go yesterday, or one quit. But they've had difficulties maintaining three quarters, because they'll hire them, but once the background check comes back, there's something there. We can't have them in that facility. So, we would run in, I will tell you, just based on what I've learned and got, that we would run in similar issues. It's much easier to manage when you hire a company to do that for you, because if you're not happy with what they're providing, you can find another company. Or, in the case of JamPro, it's a matter of, okay, we lost one, they go find another person to fill that void for you. If they're not cleaning the way you want them to clean, or Mr. Paul wants them to clean because he's very particular, they will come out and address it. We don't have to assign someone to supervise them regularly. If we hired three folks, I'd have to make sure I had somebody watching them, you know, making sure managing them. So, our recommendation is to outsource it. Long story short, the quotes that we did get, or proposals that we did get, because we even reached out to Evans Building Maintenance several times.
Did he respond?
Yeah, one time I called and a gentleman answered. He was at some conference and it was real noisy. Said he'd call me back, and so I put in three additional phone calls, three additional emails, and they haven't returned.
Are you still open if they submit a package?
If they submit a package, I'm sure we would be open.
I'll call them today on my way to happen.
So, get them to submit something. I will tell you, just from a dollars standpoint, JamPro was the cheapest, even, you know, we considered the local. In fact, the local person was higher than Georgia Facility Services. What was that cost? Okay, so, the other thing is, we, I will say real quickly, is I gave options for one quarter, two quarter, three quarters. We weren't quite sure how many it would take, but once JamPro got in there and working, they said even the local person was saying, it's going to take three people. Once JamPro started working there, they're like, yeah, this building, it's going to take three people to keep it clean. The annual cost for JamPro was a hundred forty-three thousand four twelve, Central Georgia, which is the local person, a hundred fifty-seven two forty-eight, actually, this vote, Central Georgia's in the middle. Georgia Facility Services, a hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred. And that's base year, obviously, so, you know, we would probably just do these, I don't, if we could get a better deal to do an extended contract, you know, with, obviously with provisions to get out of the contract.
Does that include supplies, pay for cars?
That does include their cleaning, and all their equipment, vacuum cleaning.
What about like total pay for paper towels?
Uh, no, we, we buy that. But all the janitorial cleaning supplies, they furnish that. Shampoo with all that buffers, whatever. Twelve thousand a month. It's, it's not cheap, nor would be our three folks. And we need them full-time to keep the facility clean. There's a lot of foot traffic in and out of the building. It was with, you know, same foot traffic. Now it's just concentrated in one place, versus we have probate here, magistrate, spirit court clerk, and the courts and the court. They work during the day or after hire. During the day, we're limited. The building is controlled up here, so they can't get in until the, yeah, building is made available.
And having the quarters, they'll be there all day?
Yeah. So, if something goes, something happens, somebody spills, whatever, they're there, they can take care of it and clean it up.
And it could be something to where, you may start out with three, but after they get the hang of it, you could, you could potentially make two a part-time, and just do like four hours a day.
They're met, right. We're still a little early right now to see how we could manage that process. But you're exactly right, we can always turn back and see that there's two that manage with a part-time.
And to put it in perspective, I've been through seven janitorial companies at one of our medical office buildings. So, it is tough.
For the same facility? Seven for the same facility?
Yeah, it's been over ten years, and I've been through seven.
So, all right, so, you know, a couple statements you may have paid attention to, that he's saying, first year's going to cost us more than hiring employees, and I think everybody here, at least the older people speaking here, I'm all for, you know, contract stuff out because they, they, dollars and, and long-term expenses. But, I'll say this, you know, if you think these guys are going to honor this more than one year, you better go back and check that, because they're not going to honor these prices for one year. There's going to be escalations in their prices too, because we got to pay our employees more each year, they got to pay their employees more each year. You know, the rest of our facilities today are being cleaned by whom?
Who is cleaning those facilities?
Uh, our facility staff. And we have one dedicated part-time individual that cleans, and whatever we can get from community service, we utilize them to assist her to clean. So, the main building gets the biggest attention in terms of sweeping, mopping. The rest is mostly a traffic. Now, there are fewer facilities to cover. I mean, obviously, the annex is still vacant, a couple of offices. The office of probate is closed, magistrate, it's just...
So, if we were to move forward with our consolidation of buildings, I don't know how long that's going to take, and it's easy to settle. Then, it's, it's, it's easy to say that we're actually decreasing them out of buildings that we're currently cleaning, so, certainly help.
Right. So, that, with that being said, either we're going to clean buildings, we got more, or we're going to have some staff with some downtime.
Right. So, what, what I would say to the board is another reason to consider a contract is that contract can be modified rather than laying staff off. I mean, so, as we find that sweet spot, as our footprint is hopefully going to continually change, then it's easier to change your contract than it is employees. So, with this solution, we just sort of stay where we are, and we can reevaluate as our footprint keeps shrinking and shrinking as we need it to shrink.
So, I'm guessing if we're going to do that, then we're going to do an annual agreement, unless it's written into the contract?
I would say annual unless they give us some sort of concession or fix a price for three years, something like that. Hey, can you give us a better deal if we contract with you for three of them, that, you know, one year?
Still even, you know, and that might be help, that might help, but it still has to have that annual appropriations clause, and that's where, if the board doesn't approve the budget for it, then, yeah. So, if, if we have to have a, an out that will at least get us twelve months or less, so.
We don't legally, we don't have, it's not like we have a lot of, we don't have any bench strength, so, with facilities. And we're borrowing a person for recreation because we have an individual that went on F M L A. We're not sure he's going to come back. So, right now, things will, we hopefully settle down, but right now, like Paul, he's, some days he's drinking through a fire hose, so to speak, because everything you think that might have a hiccup is hiccuping at the Justice Center. So, he's here, he's there. Rarely do I get to talk to him as long as it's going up with something going on. It's him and Seth and a third person from, and then like I said, I have one person till noon that does cleaning, and we get one or two persons generally for the, from community service. But community service is not, not that reliable, just to tell you. But we couldn't use a community service person in the Justice Center.
What is our current staffing level?
We have three full-time persons in facilities and one part-time cleaning.
Okay, and I'm, I'm correcting the form. You got one out and you don't think it's going to return?
Correct.
So, we're down to two and a half.
That's right.
So, and this, I think, I don't really want to go down the track of the whole, but it sounds like we probably ought to be, you know, aggressive in fact, we need to be looking at the whole, all of our facilities if we're looking at contracts or something like that.
Get a better deal.
Get a better deal. We can look at something a little maybe, a little more long-term?
We could. It was looked at, I think they were, Jason, you may know more, it's right when I first came back, I think, we all had entertained that idea. It was pretty expensive.
We had, and I think we even had it in a work session. It, it really was cost prohibitive at that point compared to where we were with staffing, but we certainly can't look at it again.
Yeah, particularly with us, if we get to that point where we have much fewer facilities to concern ourselves with, it would be more, a lot more horrible, I think. And I don't think you'd need the manpower like you do for justice.
Yeah, I agree.
Three, yeah. And you, you might be right, and...
And I want to give credit to all the county staff too. I mean, our office, finance, I mean, wherever they are, and all of the employees, I mean, myself, Alan included, we chip in to keep our own section of the facility clean, because we know the challenges that the facilities staff has. So, like, we wipe, I mean, we dust our own furniture and wipe our own desks down and clean our own computers. I mean, so, you know, I think everyone's doing their part there. So, some better than others, but we, you know, generally are taking care of our own space to, to some degree.
Have anyone, you know, this is a tricky question, have, have there been any complaints out of the tenants in the New Justice Complex about...
None of them, no, sir.
Have we advertised for any housekeeping staff, or become accounting pro?
Uh, no, sir, not, not for this until I got further direction on whether we wanted to outsource or hire four.
And so, with this contract that services, will they be there five days a week or...?
Yes, sir, five days a week.
Half hour?
No, sir, during the day.
During the day.
Right. Because of the building and security, they've got to be there while the sheriff's office personnel are there. And they have to be escorted for some certain sections to clean, so.
Just wanted to make, this is kind of a large, a larger contract, so we wanted to make sure we had a, a vetting session before it appeared on your agenda for this. I mean, I think before we, definitely before we sign up somebody for a long-term contract, they need to look at all the facilities, because that would be where you do the best pricing. But I'll get Evans to reach out to.
Okay.
But until then, we can go month to month with JamPro, right?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm pretty sure. Probably paying a little bit of a premium, but at this point.
Yeah, I mean, just getting paid for convenience. That's one here, circle back. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is EMC Engineering update. So, I, I put a, an extra folder in there with all of their updates in writing, and so really I would ask if you have any questions about anything they submitted. And I also included one additional item in there, because we had a bridge inspection come back with some follow-up items, which is, I've got in the packet under, I just call it Po Betty and Potato Creek, so that's smaller bridge before you hit the county line when your head is down. We had an inspection come back with some maintenance from D O T, which we engaged EMC Engineering to do some engineering, and then take a proposal back to D O T to see if that would suffice. So, we would have, if they agree with our approach to it, then we have to put that project out for bid. That's the only, that's the only thing that's new out of everything that was going on. So, unless you have any specific questions about any of those projects or about anything that they submitted to me, there's a pretty comprehensive paving update in there. I've got an updated schedule as of January 30th for the well project. Not a whole lot's changed on that timeline. Alan also included a, which I've put here, an update on the auditorium repairs. As you know, we've got that part of our facility across the hall from our meeting room, that auditorium, where we've had some water intrusion. So, the firm that has helped us with the archives and some of the facilities have now finally had the opportunity to take a look at that. So, that's another thing that we'll be bringing to you, probably at a future work session, to decide how we want to handle the repairs for that. Commissioner Jones, I, I, and I had had some conversations to you, and had some concerns about, I think, was that, is that Rowan your district?
It's not anymore, but it's in...
Commissioner Vick's district, so, so, I think we've got that settled. So, my, my takeaway, and I want to doubly sure, because, you know, we're kind of less than halfway through this paving project, we really had no changes to it. So, Commissioner Jones had approached me about maybe making a modification. We didn't bring that forward to the rest of the board, so there was a discussion about paving the front entrance to the Lincoln Park V F D building. In my opinion, those came back a little too steep, so my thoughts is we'll just include that in the next project, which will be our L Make project for Jeff Davis Road. We can maybe have that as an add alternate. It would, some of these, like that as an add-on would have got us close to a 10% change to the contract, which would not make it valid for us, so.
I know it's kind of soon, but with all the cuts that the federal government's giving, is that going to affect the hell many Georgia money?
No, so that, that's like a sort of shared excise tax on fuel that we get. So, that's strictly state, so that should not change. Speaking of changes to federal, as you're all aware, there were announcements that potentially some federal funding would be paused. So, we immediately became concerned that that might affect our grant submission. So, I did make rounds with our entire federal delegation in one meeting with the chairman, with our congressman's staff, and then I circled the wagon later on that day with the staff for both of our senators as well. So, they've all have acknowledged our displeasure and any disruption that would, that would cause us not to get that funding. So, we had been advocating for that grant submission. We shared that with all our delegation staff, with one member of, let's see, I think it was Congressman Jack's staffs asked us that we actually put it in a formal letter, which I'm going to get to them. The, the two staffers that I talked to from the senate office says no formal letter was required, they would take care of it. So, we're following up with them and just telling them that there's, that our story is that, hey, there's a large public safety component to that submission for us, and it's very important to us. And that seems to be resonating with the staff anyway.
On this Po Betty Road thing, you know, I thought it changed metal, you know, down grade and that bridge. So, Po Betty's a pretty good cut through for a lot of people. And if they cut that bridge down, you know, well, hopefully it'll be open to normal traffic, just cut out the truck traffic, hopefully, you know. And, but if something happened to that bridge, that'd be like hand's middle.
Yeah, it didn't appear like it was in danger of closing. It was in danger of a downgrade, and we would, with any repairs, we should be able to get that rectified, so.
Now, one other thing, I was hoping Chris or somebody to be here in the agency. You ever talked to him about the shoulders on the rest of the road?
I believe that I did. I'd have to go back and look at my communications to see what their response was, but I'll follow up with that.
You have other discussion on EMC?
No, that's all I have unless y'all have some sort of question. And of course, I'm always glad to answer any questions you have at any time. I just want to make sure that you've got, staying up to speed with what's going on.
Okay. I'll move to next item is discussion of the purchase of sheriff patrol vehicles. Who's want to speak to this?
Well, I, I can, I can get us started here. I think, based on the meeting that Alan and I had at the sheriff's office yesterday, the sheriff, Alan and myself are in agreement that we should continue our pause, because I think we had a very, very successful meeting with the enterprise representative. And the whole conversation was really about total cost of ownership. And I think it's safe to say that Alan and I were pretty impressed with the, with their leasing model. My recommendation is that we actually bring their representative to the board for a work session presentation, because although they do work pretty closely with public safety, as, as far as state and local government is concerned, but they made some pretty compelling arguments for Public Works and, and other things too. So, I was skeptical about, you know, what that model might bring us. And, and I think in many ways, the sheriff was too, but I think after that meeting, obviously very high level and just conceptual.
Right.
We, we do want to kind of hit the pause button and explore it further. He has agreed to essentially to do as close of an apples-to-the-apples comparison as we could get by just assuming we're on the correct replacement schedule and pricing us out the equivalent replacement. But they're going to take it a step further, and they're going to take, turn our vehicle data over to their analysts, and then make a, what he anticipates will be a secondary recommendation about what our replacement schedule should be, and then present both of those. So, you would have one to sort of compare five or six vehicle purchase outright versus leased through the enterprise program. They can talk about cost of ownership and kind of explain that, how their model works. And you'll have a sort of a fair comparison, but then they'll probably come back with a, well, based on our data, really, your replacement schedule should be X, and this is what we recommend you doing this year. Alan, did I try to keep that high level on?
That's it.
Yeah. So, I, bottom line, it's like, I think the sheriff is anxious to pursue this, so, after that meeting. So, no, no rush to get a outright purchase on the agenda, bottom line, so.
So, and, and this is a second leasing company that we, we looked at. First one did not provide really usable data. So, this is a enterprise rental car, has a branch to just municipal leasing, and they, they do police vehicles, they do public works vehicles, they just do, you know, your sedans, but they, they lease the vehicle, they do the maintenance on the vehicle. It's a fleet management program. And that was one of the questions I asked at one of our very first meetings, what kind of fleet management do we have? How do we track our vehicles? How do we know how much are being used and how they're being used and how they're being maintained? And so, this is just an effort to get after that and see if there's any way to save a couple pennies here and there, pennies add up, so.
Where you got to go get a maintenance day.
So, excellent question. We all asked the same question in that meeting. So, enterprise has authorized repair places. So, when we looked at their list of authorized providers in Upson County, almost everybody was on the list. So, including the Ford dealership, including the Speedy Louvre place. So, the great thing, and as the chairman pointed out, it's really not, it's more than just vehicle leasing, it's total maintenance. So, yeah, everything appears on your dashboard. So, it tracks not only all the data about the vehicles, but it tracks all the maintenance of the vehicle. And they use that data, and essentially they have sort of used car brokers, and they run analysis on your fleet about three or four times a year, and they'll say, hey, you know, I know we had this, potentially this vehicle on a five-year replacement, but the resale on this is so high right now, we recommend you let it go now, because we could actually, based on how they do their depreciation model, they're like, hey, the, the market is really showing that these, they're getting above black book, I think is how they refer to it, on some of these models. So, we should probably flip these models along with the other ones we had planned. So, they basically, their, their fleet management, their leasing, their, their used automobile brokerage, and, you know, in the end, I think when we were having that conversation with the sheriffs, essentially what it means is you're never going to have a car parked outside that's sort of broken down or busted up or whatever. This is just going to be a continually reflect, refreshing fleet. And it will be taking advantage of, of the market rather than depreciating these to zero value.
What, two questions I got. Number one, any outfit will be on our...
It would be included all in the, and they, so we, they can still pick the upfitting, but enterprise will handle it.
Okay, so they, so, I mean, only kind of caught my attention, if they determine three years into a deal that that car needs to be replaced because they can get higher reset back, when we're basing that total cost on the upfitting.
We are.
We're going to get short-ended stick because we have to upgrade a new vehicle.
So, and another excellent point, that also came up during the discussion, the sheriff brought that up. And then the, the representative's response was as follows. He says, well, because the sheriff, because the representative said, well, what do you do with the equipment when you strip it down, when you decommission? And actually, that's the term that they use, when you decommission. Well, he says, well, by the time we decommission a vehicle, we can't reuse the equipment, because the, either the models have changed and it won't fit. And, and that's what he used his point to say, well, if you're refreshing your vehicles at a sweet spot, you'll be able to refresh... you'll be able to refresh your equipment, take the old equipment and put it on a new vehicle. So that, he says that they always are looking for the opportunity to try to do that, too. So if you have a certain model of Interceptor Explorer that you have outfitted, and they now know the model is going to change, then maybe they'll kind of refresh a little early so we can reuse the equipment and save, you know, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars per vehicle. So that was one of the examples they used, but that's about it.
And this will take us out of this, hey, we need the vehicle back, we need to sell, you know, liquidate the vehicles and try to get scraps for them or whatever, get us out of that business. So, so in the end, where we're at is the sheriff's good with this. No one's on foot patrol right now. We continue to research how we can better have fleet management in the county.
Correct, yeah. So I think we're okay with the pause this way. I hope to bring some data back for you all to consider.
Okay. And hopefully nobody rejects any more color.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance, and this is the meetings, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have the draft ordinance. We did have our first public hearing at the last meeting. I did try to explain it to the best of my ability. What I took away from that was there was some concern from some constituents about a time limit up front. Not the five minutes, but the twenty minutes, right? Is that what y'all took away from it? That's what I took away from it. So, so in the ordinance, we have two proposed public hearing sessions. One is specific to the agenda. If you're coming and we're talking about, you know, whatever item on the agenda that night, you can talk at the beginning of the meeting and let us know your thoughts. And then there was another one, if you're coming to talk about some development or whatever that's not on the agenda tonight, let us get through what we, whatever came to witness and what we came to do. And then there was a twenty-minute availability there. That's kind of the feedback I got, that maybe we don't want to have the twenty-minute cap on the front end. Did y'all take away anything different?
That's all I heard.
Well, and a lot of times when we have a topic, previously it would be said that if everybody's getting up and saying the same thing, we'd ask that you, you know, consolidate. And usually, I don't think we've ever had any easy number of response.
Typically, what happens is, just during public comment, I've never really, unless, like I said, unless we were having a hearing, a public hearing on something, you know. I also think there was some confusion amongst the audience and the people there.
Yeah, it might have been the presenter, right.
I just think we have to take, you know, small bites and, and just people, you know, they get suspicious anytime we're doing something. But I think that was the thing, but I mean, I think if, now, if we're going to have a, if you want to complain about a specific topic, I would say, I would say we wouldn't even need the second twenty minutes unless there's a public hearing you want to discuss. Because any other thing you want to discuss should be covered in the, if it's not part of our agenda that night, then it should be covered in a public conference. Because at that point, that's exactly what it is, a public comment. If I'm understanding what we're talking about here, if there's a public hearing and you want to speak, whatever you want to say about the public hearing, you've got twenty minutes, five minutes versus.
So, so the premise of this breakup is, at our first meeting, we had public comments, right? And the public comments were about a new development, a public comment was about appointments, right? Neither of those things was what we came to the meeting for that night. I'm perfectly fine with everyone should have their opportunity, excuse me, the opportunity to say something publicly. And that was only two, right? So, but as I looked at the other counties, the way they did it was public comment at the beginning of the meeting was, we're talking about what's on the agenda because the audience came to talk about what's on the agenda. And it's being respectful of the community and the board to get the business that we came here to get done. And then they had the opportunity at the end, after all the business is done, if there was other public comments that had nothing to do with what we were there for tonight, those individuals had opportunity in a specific timeframe that they could have their comments. And the audience, the audience could leave if they, you know, which we see a lot. Once they hear what they came to here for, it's seven o'clock at night on Tuesday night, they'd rather be somewhere else. And so it was really just about respecting people's time and what the agenda is. So that was my thought process behind it. But I'm, it's not a fall of my sword issue to me. So that's where I was going with that.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, the comments I got the next day and a couple days after that were, you know, if there's eight people, or six, or whatever, sign up to make a comment, then the first four people do their five minutes total, then the other people don't get to be heard. And I think it's very important that if you sign up, you get heard.
Yeah, well, that's what I just said. I'm not falling my sword with the twenty minutes. So I was moving on to the next topic, right? Do we want to have a separate upfront, it needs to be about the agenda? And if you want to talk about each other's answers, items that's important to you, but maybe not what everybody came to talk about, should you be at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, because, this is my personal opinion.
That's what we're asking for.
But the tone from some people about nothing having to do with can influence the whole crowd.
Right. And that's why I'm saying, we're coming here, we have an agenda, we're coming here to address these items, right? And I'm all for, if Paul wants to talk about this item, have your five minutes to talk about his item. Chris, you want to talk about it, talk about it. But if you want to talk about something else, you know, you can, but let's get through what we're here to do. That's kind of what I was trying to.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I know some county, they have a timeframe where you have to send your, if you want to have a public comment, you send it in with the clerk by a certain time. So is that something that we may be interested in doing so that we can decipher? Because you know people are going to come in and they're going to put their name on this list that they're supposed to fix. I mean, if you have three lists, a public here and a before.
Agenda item?
Yeah.
To let it come before y'all and y'all kind of distinguish.
If it's not agenda, is that what you're saying?
Or any other, either way. That way they can separate it.
But that's going to make us have to make sure we have our agenda vow at a certain times to give people an opportunity to respond to what we're asking.
I'm hesitant there because, you know, Dave announces on the radio, the county commissioners are meeting tonight, on the agenda is X, Y, and Z, and it's the first I heard about it, and I'm like, oh man, I need to be there for that.
But then you wouldn't be able to speak to be there.
Right, so I'm a little hesitant with that, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? So what do you do in a situation where somebody wants to, they want to have a comment on something on the agenda and then they want to have something outside of the agenda? Or they have a comment that kind of is a mesh, you know?
I turned it on earlier.
If they were timed out in the public comment section and they roll it over into the end of the meeting.
I'm just wondering, this is just me outside looking in, if, are we using the KISS method here or are we making it more complicated? I'm just thinking that we're going to create more work. If we do it in a situation where staff has to review it, it's going to get really complicated because people are going to want to argue, well, that's not what I meant about, you know, you know, that's, you took it the wrong way, or whatever. I mean, in the past, I don't, maybe I'm not remembering, which is probably true. I don't see where we ran into an issue with it or.
No, I agree, I agree. I think the biggest issue that we've had with this is public hearing versus public comment. Obviously, we've always had two layers.
Somebody comes in and signs up.
So, so, you know, just to give you some feedback that I got, right after the meeting, I had somebody walk up to me and their comment was like, okay, we showed up about fifteen minutes early and we came in here and then there's this piece of paper laying up there. We don't know what we're supposed to sign, we don't know what we're signing up for, when we're going to get to speak. Nobody's given us any direction. You know, and I think that was just an oversight on our part typically. And I was going to bring this up to the chairman, it's probably a good idea that, and I'll be happy to remind you. It's that soon as we come in and we're sitting down, you know, and right before we call the meeting to order, that we, you know, we've done it in the past, but not consistently. Just as a reminder, I think that as a board, we should just say, hey, has anybody did this yet? To remind, hey, this is what this sheet is for. And maybe, I mean, I know, maybe we need a list on what it's for.
Yeah, but I mean, can you change colors of the papers?
Right, it's just because I've seen it happen numerous times where we call X, because maybe, well, I thought that was a sign-in sheet.
Yeah, that's a very common.
Right, so.
We don't have a sign-in sheet.
I mean, I, you know, what was presented to me is, hey, can somebody just be in here and tell us what we need, you know, give us some direction, give us some, you know, is that a sign-up sheet that we got to sign in? Because I, I mean, how many times have we heard that, rather than saying, you call their name and they go, oh, well, I'm just, I thought y'all wanted to know how many people showed up and I signed up. So we just got to give, we got to give the citizens some kind of direction. Because let's face it, until I got involved in public office, you know, I just stayed home like the rest. Most people do, just talk bad about it. And how that did tragic things. But, so a lot of these people, it's their first time, especially if they're coming to a public hearing. Because, you know, they're showing up for something's about to happen in their backyard and they're concerned.
Okay, so let me see where we're at.
We're all over the place.
Where we're at is no time limit on public comment before we start the meeting.
Just on the individual, but not the.
There's an individual time limit, but there's not a number of people who can talk, right? So there's not an end time, all right?
So we just scratch on the twenty minutes?
We scratch the twenty minutes. But we're still with, it needs to be agenda, right? Because people come in and they have, they can be very passionate about whatever they want to speak about. And it's not what we're there to talk about. And I agree with Paul on this, that it sometimes sets the tone for the whole meeting. And it's not, not necessary helpful to the agenda. So there can be other public comment at the end. I think that needs to be timed because everybody, you know, it's not on the agenda if people, you know.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I see that term glancing again. So I was, maybe then. Because, and I understand the argument, it's like, all right, well, I want to speak about two of the agenda items and then I want to speak about something else, and that means they're going to be on two different lists. What if, rather than trying to decipher what is appropriate for the agenda and what's just general comment? What if you said, hey, everyone gets seven, everyone gets seven minutes, but at the front of the meeting, you get two. And then at the back of the meeting, you get another five. And then you can talk about whatever you want. I mean, something simple, I know you were saying, is there any way to simplify it?
You just borrow a gun and then hand it to them like.
Because I hear what you're saying is you want to get, you want to get to the people's business, and, yeah. And, you know, limiting the time up front is going to do.
And I don't want the tone of the meeting to be dictated by something that's not what we're there to talk about. Your opinion counts.
I'm just trying to think back on a meeting where, and I'm not trying to be overly critical, where it's made a difference as far as separating. Somebody help me out. Has there been a situation where we would have been like, man, we should have waited and put them at the end?
Or have you ever thought about it before?
I've been to, I've been to other commissioners' county meetings. And the ones that I've been to, they had the tear your commissioner up all the way at the end. That's what the general, you know.
But we never really get sideways. I mean, it really, but the only public comments we have is public comment. And if it's about, you know, some type of rezoning, if it's.
That's the public hearing.
Public hearing. That's really the only two events that we deal with. And they're currently separated, and they currently have time limits on it, and, you know.
We do need to codify those time limits because they're currently in a policy, right?
I mean, so I think if we just address those two issues, and I mean, I think in public comment, if there's fifty people there.
They get five minutes of space.
They get five minutes of space. Because that, where their representative is, and they're there to talk about.
I'm not a fall of my sword person on this.
But now, when it comes to the public hearings, you know, we do need to formalize, you know, because we, you know, need to stick with the time limit. And we've always asked, hey, if there, you know, if there's thirty people in here, look, y'all get together and get a few folks to speak and do it.
Because that's really a way a debate is supposed to occur, is, you know, you got this much time to make your case, you get this much time to counter, and then you get this much time to rebut, right? That's how it typically should work, but, you know, the developer gets ten minutes to show us PowerPoint and what he wants to do and how great his project is. And then how many people are going to stand up and say, you know, I don't like this, I don't want this, or I'm in favor of this? You know, typically, you know, in the debate, it would only be a certain amount of time if you have to do that.
And I think it needs to be equal amount of times, too. I know at some point, somebody had mentioned, four gets twenty minutes, against gets more minutes or whatever. But, and I'm just coming from trial, defense prosecution gets the same amount of time.
Right. I think what we proposed was a ten-minute presentation, twenty-minute comment, ten-minute rebuttal by the, so twenty-twenty, basically.
Okay.
I have a question. When you say, because generally, it's not the applicant that does the presenting.
Right, it might be a staffer.
So is that where you're limiting Doug or staff's time to ten minutes to present to the board or the applicant?
So he can say what it is, the applicant can make their case for why they should be able to get the change. Doug's going to tell us, this is what the change is. This is the scenario, this is it. And then the applicant needs to make their case of why they need to go from AR to whatever.
But Doug does make a recommendation based on staff, so I personally think his time needs to be equal. You know, and maybe it's twenty minutes for Doug or, you know, for presentation and then twenty minutes for, you know, somebody that's opposed to it, or opposed to it or for it. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Twenty, twenty, and twenty, and, because, and I know, well, I know what you're thinking, that we're going to be there forever. We really have never, if it becomes a problem, then certainly.
That's why you have rules, because you have to be able, if something arises, you need to be able to address it. We don't have the rules right now.
Right, 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 right. And we're not going to be able to.
I'm going to stand up for the county side of it for a second. You know, I don't want to hinder Doug from doing twenty-five minute, if it takes twenty-five minutes to put the whole program thing. You know, I want to know everything Doug knows about whatever's going on and not let him shortcut it and then we miss something. So if it takes Doug's part a little longer, so be it, but the people part can be, you know.
Yeah, ten.
Yeah, I don't think Doug is a part of that.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to have, this is what the issue is, and that's Doug.
I'm okay with twenty-five, twenty.
Right.
So, so presentation, twenty-four, twenty minutes.
Twenty-four?
I'm the developer, I can, I can take twenty minutes, I can use ten and ten, and against can use twenty. That's where we're at. Consensus?
Um, developer will get ten on this one.
Yeah, the developer gets ten, and he gets rebut, because he may not know, he or she may not know what the actual issue. That they're arising, he might not have to address that upfront, you know. So, he or she needs to be able to come back and say, I understand what you're saying here, and this is what our resolution is.
A lot of times, they don't even present.
Right.
There's one other thing I wanna change on this, and this is of the office. Is on public hearings, still in there, it says time can be yielded. And I don't wanna yield anybody time. If this guy speaks two minutes, I don't want the next guy to spit, to speak seven minutes.
The yielding of time is, there's a twenty-minute clock running, well, it's not running until they start speaking, but. Against has twenty minutes, so I stand up and I say, hey, I'm Dan Broome, I'm a resident of Upton County, start the clock, and I speak for three minutes.
Well, I thought we'd been away with the twenty minutes.
That's for public comments.
Of course, that's public comments that we get away with, but on, on a public hearing, where it should be equal for and against. They're saying, I'm, I'm here to speak against this, and I speak for three minutes, right? There's seventeen minutes left in the against. So, I didn't use five minutes, there's seventeen minutes for additional comments.
We think twenty minutes is enough.
Well, that brought up another question. So, when you say for, I'm thinking that's constituents that are for the proposed project. I know the presenter has their time, ten minutes, and then they can rebut ten minutes, but is that twenty minutes for the constituents to get up and speak, either for or against?
Yes, is, is, is twenty minutes to speak against the proposal, right? A public hearing is normally, you know, what is their concerns? So, I, I get it, you probably might have some people stand up and say, I just said.
I do see it's for, you're gonna have, you're gonna have that person stand up and you're gonna think, well, they're gonna hear you talk about the fact that they don't want this, and they get it, go, I think this is a good development.
And I'm gonna use the rest of the time to tell you what.
Right. We kinda, yeah, it just, it complicates things a little bit more when you're creating a map.
I mean, the only way to address it is if you have twenty minutes for the presenter, twenty minutes for twenty minutes against, or you have no cap.
Keep in mind though, time has never really been an issue, has it?
It has been, and, and, uh. Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember one night, we were there for almost three hours with the church out on how we said before, right? So, um, and a lot of, a lot of the people who spoke, they said the exact same thing, right? Well, that was obviously, yeah.
We should have had where it had, should have been a nice beforehand, you know? If you're kind of with the church group to speak for our against it, then get together and just have one of them say, yeah.
Or if you're not a party to it, if you're just an interested party, you get minimal amount of time, your time. But if you are an actual party to the development, then you get, you know, you get the twenty minutes or whatever.
Yeah, well, we gotta have a rule, right? Because the reason to have a rule is because something comes up, you need to have a rule, right? So, uh, we can use them as an example. They, they get, Doug gives a presentation, they have.
He gets twenty-five minutes, or whatever.
Whatever Doug gets, but the, the, the church in this case should be able to make their case, right? And anyone who is in support of them should coordinate with them on the for side, right? And then the other side is against, right? And they have twenty minutes. And in, in an ideal world, they would have collaborated and have some, a plan for how they're gonna present the case. That's, that's how debate works, right? Um, so.
But a lot of these people don't know each other.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to do when you got a community of thirty people that show up and.
You don't want four people to speak for the whole group. You're right, I don't know these guys, so.
Yeah, I don't care if it takes me three more hours, if, 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 if a constituent comes, if they wanna speak. Even if we have to cut it down to three minutes.
Yeah, the fairness part comes into play though, right?
No, it does come into play.
It does, Paul, because it's supposed to be a public hearing, right? And the, the party that is trying to do something is entitled to have their say and have their rebuttal. And that's why there's debate, that's why there's time limits. So, it can't be a three-hour. And I get there can be passion about things, right? But there still has to be rules.
But if we're gonna change our voting being from twice a month to once a month, then you need to be able to allot that extra time. Or you can't have more than.
So, what, what would you propose?
This twenty-minute time, not having a time limit.
Well, I would propose, not, not an overall, here's what I'm thinking. You give the parties, you give the, the. Doug has set amount of time, you give the actual, in this scenario, the church, the person representing the church, twenty minutes. And then anybody for or against that's not associated with the church, five minutes, yes. Each. Each, you give five minutes.
Our twenty-year. Are you good? I've seen, I've seen that as well.
Three is the, really.
Because if you don't, it's just like Commissioner Biggs is saying, and Commissioner Jones. You're, you're not giving the public their opportunity to speak right now. You know, you're limit, you're giving it, but you're limiting the amount of time you get.
And we can always still say beforehand, if you're all here for the same reason, we would appreciate you getting a leader together.
I mean, sometimes, you know, in some of those meetings, you know, but well, I, you know, he said what I wanted to say.
I know.
And, and that's good, but if there are ten people that want to say something, I don't want them. I don't wanna say, well, you run out of time.
Well, it's the same principle with public comments. I mean, we can't say, everybody, all hundred people that show up for public comments, you only get twenty minutes. Well, you know, you're not really, that's not being fair to the people that showed up to.
The only way you're gonna limit it, if you're looking at.
Individually.
Is basically individual or on five, three.
Yeah, so that's what other counties do, is usually three-minute comments, is what I saw, so.
Do we wanna do that?
Is that a consensus, that we just change it to no?
Because it doesn't.
Open it into three minutes.
Right now, it's not in our ordinance at all.
Yeah, we need to have something in our ordinance.
I think three minutes, I'll be happy with three minutes, as long as everybody that shows up, that signs up, has an opportunity to.
Okay.
Is that for public comment as well as public here?
I think we keep public comments just the way we've been doing it. That's where we were, right?
Five minutes.
Public here in three minutes. So, can I just, for the record of me correcting this or updating this. We're gonna have the applicant to speak for ten minutes, opposed.
Unlimited but three-minute individually.
And then.
Actor gets to rebut anything someone says.
Limiting.
Ten.
Okay.
Well, that list we put out doesn't say if you're for or against, does it?
And we're just having, we're just having public comment.
I'm just gonna say comment, and then, um, we'll close the public hearing and then Doug will do his presentation. Because Doug normally does his presentation outside of the public here.
And I don't know that we need to link that at all.
Yeah, that makes your time.
Yeah, that's the, that's the understanding of it. Okay, I think we're, I think we're in consensus.
I have one more question.
Okay. No, go ahead.
No, no before and after comments, all are gonna be before, whether it's an agenda item or not, or we still doing two-sections.
I think we, I think we just went with five minutes at the beginning of that.
Okay.
Right now.
So, if we're all on the same.
Back to something I mentioned a minute ago, how about the yielding time?
Not on the public comment, only.
Right.
And there's no in the other, because you just gotta fix the three minutes. Alright, so now we're good.
Well, that was under public hearing.
Yeah, we.
We're gonna eliminate.
We eliminated that, we went to three minutes each. Okay. Consensus?
Yeah, as long as my people get to speak.
I'm gonna say, hey, is there any appalled people? I'll make sure. Okay. I, I, we do, we do wanna hear everyone. We just gotta figure out rules, and we don't have rules written down.
Because those are the only changes.
That's it.
Uh, that was to that. Now, the agenda says, you know, this other stuff, you know. Um, the meeting time and the meeting, um, is gonna be, you want it at the end of the month. Before Tuesday.
Yeah, I'd say before Tuesday.
Why not the beginning of the month?
Because we have a work session at the beginning of the month, and then.
I know, and then the meeting's right after the work session, which is, you ain't got three weeks after your work session to have your meeting.
What he's saying is basically, we got a work session in the middle, that we, we, we take something from the first of the month meeting, and we go, well, we, we need to talk about this a little in more detail. We push it to the work session, take it to the work session, we take it back to the second meeting, and we, and we make a decision on it. So, we're not gonna have that capability now. We're just going to, I, I mean, I think that. Like I said, the other night, I mean, as long as my constituents are okay addressing us once a month, I'm.
Yeah, I thought we said on the last meeting, work session first Wednesday, and we, we see how much work we have to do, right? This is taking a minute, right? Um, and, and then the first, the second Tuesday was an option to have a call meeting, right? If we needed to have, we need to vote on something that is urgency or time-sensitive. Or we could have a second work session and continue to work things so that we can vote on more stuff like that for Tuesday. That's what we said last time.
So, you want two work sessions in one month?
It depends on how much work we have.
Only if it's, if we feel like it's necessary.
Well, that's why I'm saying. Have the meeting, the first two, the first regular meeting. Yeah, right after the work session, because it's fresh and.
But it does, if we have it at the end, it does give staff a little more time to put together everything that's.
We're gonna have resolutions and.
What we haven't talked about. You know, so you have to have another work session. If you put anything else together.
No, you would talk about it like today. We talked about it today, and then whatever y'all want us to do, we get it ready for the fourth Tuesday.
Right.
Unless the cycle goes.
If we need, we can always have a meeting on the second Tuesday, we can always do that.
And it's very common for us to, with our two-meeting scenario, it's very common for the staff to have stuff ready for the second meeting. We rarely ever, we, we sometimes, if it's a urgent matter for the board, we will jump on it and get it ready for Tuesday. But, yeah, it's, it's more likely that it appears on an agenda later than that.
And then, to Paul's example, probably in December, we're gonna have a call meeting in the second Tuesday, that's when we can have a meeting.
City gates will change their meeting day now, it's the second Tuesday.
So, the other, um, the other thing I thought that was a benefit of doing this is. I've had constituents tell me, like, we need to be at the Board of Education meeting on the second Tuesday, right? And we have to decide where we're gonna be, and I think we can be more productive by having a work session, a possible another work session. In a, in a good meeting, and we provide, uh, the ability of our constituents to go to another governing body that. Is involved in their property taxes, uh, to, to those meetings.
Can I, can I make a comment for Doug on the agenda? He has, um, already put out a schedule for his public hearings and when stuff will come to the board, based on the second Tuesday meeting. Do you want him to see what he has? And y'all decide if y'all wanna have that second meeting, or do you want him to change everything now to align with the.
So, I would say that he should look at what he has, and if some things are time-sensitive, then we should be open to having a meeting, because that's what we're saying. If it's time-sensitive, we're willing to call that meeting on the second Tuesday. But if it's just a matter of what is, what is his routine, then he can adjust his routine.
Yeah, I mean, we probably need to get it adjusted, because I mean, I, I know, I think I can speak for everybody sitting at this table, anybody sitting in this room. In today's times, I mean, you know, we got calendars and they go out, and I place my personal life and my business life around what I got on my calendar. And, you know, maybe we're gonna have a meeting, maybe we're not, or if I got, maybe we're gonna have a meeting, or maybe I need to go over here and another meeting, and I'm probably gonna go over here to the other meeting. You know what I'm saying? I mean, if I'm already obligated on that date, because I don't have anything down for it. So, that, that's the only thing I caution on, on that, you know? Sounds great to me, if we can get by it once a month, maybe, that, you know, if we can get all our business done, then that's great, but. I, if we're gonna have to constantly be in the habit of having that call meeting, we, we just need scheduling.
Well, that's not the, that's not the intent.
But I, but I, but I will say, because I do speak with the staff, we will, we'll make it happen, so. Y'all set it up the way you want it, and we'll make it happen, so.
So, the second Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday?
It's the fourth Tuesday. And again, I, my constituents were, I guess, all my constituents were.
Yep.
But the people who have spoken to me, that was one of their concerns, was being able to go to the Board of Education on that Tuesday.
We've actually, I mean, we've heard that a lot over the years. It's a very, very common thing, so.
Well, now's the time when they make the.
Okay, so I think we got consensus on all that, right? Have to make some ending changes. Alright. Uh, next, Adam, Community Engagement Coordinator, Public Information Officer, whatever it's tied with.
So, the chairman asked me to put this on the agenda, so I'm gonna, I mean, I think the board knows that. At many levels of myself and other members of the staff have always advocated for that position. We understood that, um, under our budget instructions for last time, that that was not gonna be a possibility for us to refill that position. Um, I think there are areas of our daily interaction with the public that are, it's obvious that we're not. Up to the standard that we were beginning to reach when we had that position filled. So, to me, it's just a matter of what the board's objectives are, and, you know, I say, I think it was the, was the chairman that I think wanted to have the discussion. About potentially bringing the position back, so.
Yeah, so, um, you may or may not know, I'm kind of active on social media. When I look at, uh, the county, and I look at our social media, I look at, you know, I think someone posted yesterday about the bridge closing, that's good, right? But we, we don't have routine information, public information going out. If there's, there's something of a emergent issue, we, we'll address it, like the winter storm, the bridge closing. But if you do not post routinely, it doesn't matter that you posted that emergent issue, because it's not gonna be in the algorithm. To populate in our constituents' feed. It's not one of those things that's gonna pop up, right? So, uh, it's not effective, right? Uh, the other thing that has, you know. I've spent some time on is the website. The website is not, uh, user-friendly, uh, there's some dead links, there's some dead paths. Uh, there's a lot of things that lead to the heart and soul, uh, area, right? And, uh, that's not a current program, but that's where a lot of our stuff is tagged to. And, um, some of the menus need some work, some of the graphics need some work, because. um, some of the menus need some work, some of the graphics need some work, because we have dark graphics, and we have, uh, um, you know, stuff behind our logo that doesn't make it pop and make it intuitive, uh, you can go to other counties around here and, uh, and see their website, some of them use the exact same company that we use, but their website is a lot more easy to navigate, uh, and they have tools that make it easy for their constituents to communicate, so, for example, um, there is a module where, um, right now, we post the agenda, we have the agenda portal, right, but that, that's only a part of what's available from that company, we can post the agenda, right, and they also have, we can post the, uh, minutes, and it's tabulated, so you can go to, uh, I wanna see the police, uh, cruiser enterprise contract, or whatever it is, and there's also the link to the live media, right, it's all in one place, and, uh, it's very easy for the public. The other things that other counties around us have is, I wanna do an open record request, uh, print off the form, fill out the form, scan back in the form, and email it to Ms. Jones, right? Our, the company that provides our website already has the capability there, all you gotta do is hit the form, fill out the blanks, and hit send, and it'll go, uh, to Ms. Jones, or, if we want it to go to other places, depending on what the category is, and we have a back structure, they have it set up, and so it keeps a spreadsheet of when it arrived, when the three-day time limit is that you're supposed to get back to them, and all that capability is there, we're just not utilizing it right now. The other capability is there is, um, applying for a board position, which is very important to me, same thing, you don't have to print something off and fill it out and scan it back in, just drop down the menu, fill in the blank, hit it, it archives it, you know, has it under the thing, and we can just go in there, we can all access it, so, those capabilities are there with the company that we're currently using, we don't need to go out and spend thousands of dollars to redo anything, we might need to spend a few hundred dollars to add a module or something, but it doesn't matter if we don't have someone dedicated, right, we, we have, you know, different directors that have different areas on there, but I'm sure that making sure their portion of the website is not the most important thing, they're trying to figure out how to keep the building clean, how to keep the, the bridge open, and things like that, so we need someone who can do that for us, and I, you know, I am open to, I know there's budget constraints, I'm not one to say, hey, we need to spend a lot of money, but, I think, for us to be better with our community, that we need to do this and this, and I'm open to, do we do it as a part-time, let, let someone earn, demonstrate to us that this is a benefit, and earn their way to a full-time role, maybe. That's, that's my take.
What size of the IT department do you have?
Well, we have, we have a, well, we have a three, three-person IT department, but this is not, this is not an IT function, though.
I understand, though, this is not something that they actually, they're gonna take on?
No. Well, no, we don't, no one in IT would have sort of a.
Graphic design.
Or any type of experience in, in communications, they're, they're, they're just a backend network people.
There's some with contract out. Well, are the companies out there to do this, I mean?
There's, there's individuals that do, like, help companies with social media, I think this position would be a little bit more than that, and they maybe.
Yeah, 'cause this position needs to be about, we need to.
Contact.
Need to be about messaging, it needs to be about, this is what's going on, this is why it's going on, this is when it's going on, and it needs to be, we can get a message out, and we need to be consistently communicating with the public.
So, if you, if you remember, like, when we had this position, they were at all of our meetings, they did meeting recaps, um, that, so that was, and, I thought those were very popular with the, the public, so, um, a day or two after the meeting, they would bring Jessica and I sort of a brief, and they would highlight things that happened during the meeting, quotes from commissioners, um, so that was a very popular program, that they, um, 'cause, 'cause we had two people that served in this position, they were basically the webmaster, so they were in charge of meeting with department heads individually, trying to get an understanding, and so, alright, well, we know what you do every day, but what's the message, what do you need people to be able to find, you know, they would be responsible for making sure that one link leads you to the right place and leads you to the other place, they did all of our press releases, so.
But, what is the job responsibility of the current IT department? What is that? Danger role?
So, that, they basically run and maintain our entire network?
As, as servers and networker and, uh, end-user devices.
Telecom, yep, uh, everything, so.
They're pretty.
So, definitely, you know, like, you know, law enforcement, judicial, so they.
The tax office.
I'm, I'm lobbying the state on that. On the other front. Alright, so we had three, we had two, and then we picked up a contract with the city, so we got another one, and, uh, brought them on board, and now we lost the contract with the city, and now we gotta have three.
You're back to the IT department.
Right.
Okay, we're on Public Information Officer.
Right, I understand, but we, 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 we're trying to address the part that, hey, we, do we have staff in place that can handle some of this?
I, I think the answer is no.
Could we train someone?
Well, I'm not sure we are where we need to be with the IT department, right, I've only been on the board for a month, and I'm not, and IT is my background, and I'm telling you, I'm not confident that, uh, we have everything we need, you know, uh, right now, and that is a very small department, and so, uh, I don't.
So, the IT department, we didn't backfill with exactly the same type of positions that, so, in, in other words, we, we have two very, very new staffers that are not at the same salary level and/or skill level when it comes to, like, um, things like law enforcement, court administration, tax collection, all the things that they have to be responsible for, so, you know, they, they are extraordinarily technologically savvy, and then they're learning all the municipal component of maintaining a network for a, a, a smaller but highly complex, or, uh, organization. From an IT standpoint, we are actually, for as few employees as we have, and as small of a budget we have, our IT backend is actually extraordinarily complex, and is multifaceted, that, that's, it's not an easy job, and it's a twenty-four-seven job a lot of times, so, correct.
Um, yeah.
I don't outsource anything, really.
Yeah. My background is IT and cybersecurity, that really does not translate to, uh, you know, graphic design and public information, uh, I, I don't think those things align, um, you know, I don't think that person who does that should report to the IT department, I think they report somehow to, uh, the front office, because of about messaging, um, I don't know how much it costs to do, uh, a full-time or a part-time, I don't know how many positions we have vacant on payroll right now.
Well, what was the current salary of, uh, the previous, uh?
Public Information Officer. Or, or the cost, not the salary, the total cost to have this.
Mid, uh, like six.
Again, benefits.
Between sixty-two to sixty-five, somewhere in that range was the salary that we paid.
What was the salary?
That was the salary.
The total was like eighty?
Yeah, what's the total cost?
Totally, the total cost around eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand have a full-time.
Full-time.
What's the total cost to have a part-time, 'cause you don't have the same benefits?
Well, let's see, it'd be about fifty, thirty-five thousand, alright, no benefit.
It's so, so, what I'm asking, and I don't know how many positions we have vacant right now, in, in the county, how many positions do we have vacant on the payroll right now?
At this moment, I couldn't tell you how many vacant we have, I could kinda give you an idea when we're budgeting, um.
Are we talking three, four, five?
More than that.
So, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, don't encompass shares, no constitutional, just outside of constitution.
And also funding source, too, is another, but.
Only two, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But some, if some of those are, like, say, in the road department, alright, that's not a general fund, funded position, so.
That's what I'm trying to understand, hire lag, right, you know, 'cause, yeah, in, uh, in, in corporate America and, and government, we, we track hire lag, right, if I have three positions open for a month, right, that I didn't fill, that's X amount of the payroll that I haven't executed for this year that I've budgeted, right, and so what I'm inquiring is, if we say, our goal is to by the beginning of the second quarter, first of April, have a part-time, uh, uh, public engagement officer on the board, 'cause you gotta recruit someone, right, that's not gonna happen tomorrow, right, we're looking at three quarters of a year of a part-time salary, so what is that?
Three quarters of the year of a part-time salary?
I don't know, um, fifteen thousand?
Twenty-five thousand dollars managed, right, twenty thousand dollars, right, and I'm saying, we can't find that money, uh, somewhere in the county to pay, to, to help ourselves be better, uh, facing the public, so, and in fact, like, a twenty thousand dollar purchase wouldn't even come to us, right?
No, I would say, in, in, in a part-time role, I mean, in, uh, you know, really, you want this position at your meetings, okay, you want them at other public events that either I'm attending, or y'all are attending, or we're all attending together, because we want pictures, we want press releases, we want, hey, Commissioner Ellington to address the volunteer firefighter body department of Thurston, this is kinda what he said, I mean, that was the idea behind that position, so, it was a lot of nights, weekends, it was working with our emergency staff, getting, you know, during ice storms, or during tornadoes, or during hurricanes, you know, that person was.
I have a hundred percent on board with you, and that's where I wanna be.
Well, and I would say, like, having a part-time person that would give us that, probably not likely, and then recruiting someone to do that part-time would be difficult, not to say that we can't try it, if you want us to try it, but I think we gotta make sure to manage expectations, that's, it won't be what I just described.
It won't be what you just described, right, but they can maintain the website, they can post, right, uh, directors, commissioners.
They have to be able to write.
Can, can provide them content, right, if, if they're not at the meeting, and so, I'm, I'm not saying, you know, give me a hundred percent solution today, I'm saying, give me something, and we'll work towards the hundred percent solution, it may be next fiscal year before we get there, but we gotta do better than what we're doing, right?
Well, you know, the other thing was, you know, it was kinda like the first one, Ed, Jennifer did a good job, that was a man, wasn't it? And, um, then she got bought out, you know, went to the hospital, they paid more.
We'll talk about that later, but, you know, and, and that's the thing with the, with the part-time job, right, there's people who do, you know, um, what do they call it, we can just pick it up side of, uh.
Freelance?
Freelance, and they're, yeah, I'm losing the word for how people operate, they gig, there's, there's a gig economy, right, like, they may have two or three part-time jobs, right, uh, and it's almost like it's a contractual thing to them, so, I think there's probably someone out there who would, who would, uh, apply for it, and who could do it, uh, you know, but I think we have to do something, if y'all don't wanna do, uh, full-time, uh, 'cause, uh, three quarters of eighty thousand dollars is, is, uh, fifty-something thousand dollars if we were to hire by, uh, one April, um, we're gonna have to have to do a part-time, but, uh, I think we gotta do something, and I, I think there's money to be found with, uh, positions that are open, you know, we don't have all the books in front of us right now, but.
We don't have any unfunded, 'cause we don't, we don't have any, um, positions that are on the book.
Well, and, and I, I, I don't wanna put either Allen or, uh, Sheree on the spot, but I, I don't think we have an open general fund position.
I don't, no, Sheree, I don't know of any, but.
So, you know, um, most of our vacancies on the Board of Commissioners side, um, generally are, are either in recreation utilities or, um, a road department, and that, those are either joint projects fund, or those are unincorporated funds, which we really can't call mingle, 'cause this is a county-wide position.
Ms. Sheree, uh, I, I, I agree that we need something, um, if we possibly, you know, arrange, 'cause the salary thing was an issue, and you're looking for someone with that expertise and has, have those talents, that sixty-five may not be what you gotta pay someone to have them come in and do, be a public information officer, uh, we might get them, but then we'll lose them, and something could fall out, so, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, it's something if you, you all get to that point, maybe arrange that we could do, you know, that's the county manager's decision, but, if, if we could lock in somebody and keep them, there's some folks, one in particular, that might be a great role, but I don't know, it's, I don't wanna be.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, a full-time position right away might be a bridge too far right now, and I can certainly look at into next year's budget, and we'll start talking about that, but I'm trying to figure out, what, what can we do right now so that when, you know, someone wants to sign up for emergency management, that they can get on there, and boom, it's there, they, you know, they can find it. I don't know if y'all been on the website, it, it needs work, I, I've spoken with the, with the company, you know, I spoke with the company, and they're gonna come back, but there's work that needs to be done, and they'll do some of the work, but someone has to be there telling them what we need to do, and that's not me, I don't have time for that, I don't think you have time for that.
Well, you, you, I mean, you do, you, you see what we have time for, and we get.
That's what I'm saying, we gotta have somebody.
And we get the minimum stuff out, um, we don't, you know, I'm always disappointed when, if we make a new hire, we can't do a, a press release, or, you know, um, or if we can't highlight an employee for an achievement publicly, I mean, we should be doing all those things, um, but we're just very limited on staff.
That could be mine, sure.
Yeah. Well, the, um, the, the only way that I see that the staff really could move forward is that we would just have it as a, a decision item on your agenda, so we, we could make, based on the conversation I have heard today, we would put some sort of re-establishment of the position proposal in a short resolution, and then let y'all decide at a meeting.
I'll leave here and go to your office to find the money, I think there's money.
I got some in the drawer. Just joking, that was a joke.
Alright, okay, I think we beat that one, alright, we'll come back to it, uh, alright, Ball Field's update on the.
We have our, our, Jen from Schneider, she's here to give you an update, and to introduce yourself to Commissioner Biggs and Chairman Brew, so I'll let you take it.
Perfect, well, it's great to meet you guys, um, I know that I've been working with the board for a while, um, around a few projects, and the first project to, um, a project we were looking at to move forward was ball field renovation, which was a kind of top priority, um, I don't know if y'all were familiar with the condition of the ball fields, um, we started, before we started work on this project, but, um, I mean, anytime it rained, they were practically unusable due to the flooding, so this has been a really intensive, um, drainage remediation project, um, but even past that, you know, new dugouts and, and field two, um, new fencing, I mean, it's gonna, it's, it will have been a pretty extensive project, um, but it's kind of split into two phases, so phase one, um, should be kind of ninety, ninety-five percent by the end of this week, um, we started construction on that pretty much within a week of the fall season ending, and, um, after getting approval, maybe a month, month and a half before that, so, we've been kind of going full steam ahead. So we've been kind of going full steam ahead to make sure that if, assuming the weather cooperates, y'all should have fields that are usable and in much, much better condition by the time spring season starts. So that is all very exciting. Is there anything on phase one, Jason, that you wanted to do?
Did they get that on in one of the field?
Yeah, I don't I don't think they had quite finished. I'm not sure they had uncovered the drain that they installed. That was the issue, but.
So there's some, like, I know that there were a few low spots that just needed to be filled in. And we're gonna make sure these fields drain properly, for sure. The big item that we needed to make sure was complete is re-sodding so that the grass has time to take root over the next month and a half. We're really hoping for good sunshine. We're getting, we're getting some. Hopefully, I don't know if y'all follow Groundhog Day, but hopefully the six-four feet of winter is not scientific this year. So, yeah, we're, I mean, any questions you'll have on phase one, happy to answer. Phase two, and and kind of to fill y'all in on some context, the reason this project was broken up was really to make sure we could get the bulk of this work done in this off-season time. And so we moved forward with the main core items that allow these fields to be playable. And then phase two is looking at the concession stand and new batting cages. And so we have gone through a design process for that. And I don't know if in your packets y'all got kind of the overview there, but in between November and December, we started engaging with contractors, really trying to focus on regional and local contractors as much as possible. We posted a notice in the Upton Beacon for contractors to engage on the project as well. We had ten contractors that we engaged with throughout that process. Four that expressed interest and confirmed attendance to our pre-bid walkthrough. Two that attended and one bid received.
Ten percent.
And to be completely transparent, it, that bid was wildly out of what we would consider industry standards for like cost per square foot for doing this kind of work. So we are, we've kind of restrategized and we're gonna expand the geographic parameters of partners that we can engage with. We have, this project is kind of in a weird middle ground where you need the right kind of contractor that is willing to do a smaller project but can also still meet all the insurance requirements and things that, you know, we need them to be able to meet. We have partners we've worked with throughout the southeast that fit those criteria that we've worked with before. And so in this, but we didn't include because they're a little further away, like Nashville or Mississippi. There are some other, like, Atlanta-area contractors that we're engaging with. Bottom line, we're rebidding the project. We we do feel like there's still a project here. We just think the contractor that bid on it, it was just too small of a project for them to really be interested. So that is our plan. With that, we would hopefully have an update on pricing and what this is looking like by your next work session on next month. I think that's the fifth, I believe, present March then. So that's our goal right now. Everything goes according to plan, but we, I don't know if, I know that we reviewed the design and Ben, Commissioner Watson, you've been kind of on those calls to provide some input as we got the design together. So I don't know if you have any comment on how the design of that concession stand.
Not so much for the design. I know Paul and Jason, we were talking about this last time. Paul mentioned that he may be able to take on the batting cages when we bring that in-house just to get those up and, and, you know, working for this season. I think we need to visit that because I think we could probably do it pretty economical.
Yeah.
But, yeah, in terms of the concession stand, one, I I mean, I think it's obviously necessary that we do it. Batteries aren't ADA and it's just a very outdated building, but.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious to see, I mean, I feel like there are some local PCs that seem like they could do it, but maybe they weren't part of, maybe they didn't want to do it. But I can, I was thinking I can maybe shake some trees around and see if it gets more interesting.
Yeah. I mean, I think the plan is walkthrough on the week of February seventeen. So we do wanna make it as fair as possible for potential bidders to have time to review their package. So if they are, once they're interested, I think the sooner the better. We do feel good, especially one, one contractor that we worked with on a very similar-sized project that did a good job. You know, we don't have any particular incentive to work with one or the other. We just want you guys to get this project within a reasonable budget and have it move forward. But we are, we're hopeful about definitely one of them and any others that y'all can help engage with would be great, too.
And what about the, so the baseball evaluations, I believe, are in a couple of weeks? Are we gonna utilize Weaver Park for that?
I'm not sure what the plan is for that. I can I can get back to you and let you know. We do keep our rec advisory board up to date and all that stuff, too, and they have been involved in helping make these.
And I know this is a rec thing, but that falls on our winter breaks, that could cost them probably, but I can talk about it.
Is is this gonna be a matter of someone making the determination, i- is the sod been down long enough to play on?
And we can make, by, I think we did upgrade the type of turf. And forgive me, I don't know the exact technical type of turf it was, but it was more mature turf so that it could take root quicker. And in theory, it should by the time y'all are starting spring season, but we're kind of subject to weather, too.
On a seventy-five degree weather day, it's.
But we've had about two weeks of worth of weather delays throughout this process and we're still on track. So I think that's all exciting. I would say one thing regarding community engagement, y'all talk, having that conversation, I know that extends far past your pro- projects that are going on. That's a broader concern, but we have already captured content. We took before drone shots and videos of these fields. We plan to take after videos and drone shots. And we do, we can absolutely put together a social media calendar for whoever is in charge. I don't know if that's through Parks and Rec's social or the county or both, to communicate about, you know, the progress made on these fields. Just, you know, different elements of the project there as well. So we can also do that.
I can, I can help you coordinate that.
We can also do a press release, too. Our team does all, does that in-house as well. So all of that is kind of part of our partnership. And any project that we're working on together, we wanna help fill those gaps for you guys, so.
Appreciate that.
Well, and of course, they wanna promote it for the sales.
Yeah, also the best of us. And more counties that see the great work we're doing here.
Little in-house marketing.
All right.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is a discussion of personnel policies. Maternity leave, paternity leave, PTO and bereavement.
Well. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, would you kick this one off?
Sure. So Chris and I met with the staff. We met recently with the staff.
That's Tuesday.
That's Tuesday. And, you know, we went around, everybody introduced themselves and a little bit about themselves. And if you change one thing, what would you be? And there was a definite theme, I would say, Chris, right? And the theme was the the leave policies for the county employees. And it tied to bereavement was, I think, was the first one that came up. And then maternity leave came up. And then we kind of tied paternity leave in there, just in the discussion. And there was some talk about PTO. And so I was a little taken aback that we are in 2025 and we have personnel policies that do not account for bereavement leave and did not account for maternity leave. And that is, those are very common practices in corporate America and in the federal government, I know. So I wanted to, let's talk about it, you know? And and I'll tell you how I see it, right? We're talking about budgets for personnel, right? If if we have a budget for eighty thousand dollars that covers a salary and benefits of a employee for the year, and something happens to that employee, their their parent dies or they give, they have a child and they need some time off. In corporate America and even in the United States Army, they get time off. The company that I work for, if you have a direct family member pass away, it's automatic three days off with pay. And that three days is when you need it. You may need it right away because of grief. You may need it because you need to go to a funeral that's out of state and might be next week. But that's a policy that that my company has, is three days paid off for a direct family member passing. We do allow other time off unpaid. You know, sometimes it takes people longer to to get over a loss, depending on who it was and how close they were and what what they were in their life. We also have policies for maternity leave when someone has a child or adopts a child. You know, in in the Army, they get maternity leave. I think it was eight weeks, don't quote me on that. In corporate America, where I work, it's twelve weeks of pay time off for the mother of the child. And we also have paternity leave, which in my company is six weeks off for the father. And that time is not like to be take, you know, they can take it all at one time if they wanted to. But typically, what we see happen is there, the mother goes in labor, the father takes time off and that first week, they're they're off because of the birth of the child. The the mother is off nurturing the child through the end of the paternity leave. In my case, that's twelve weeks. And then the the father might take another week or two of his paternity leave because it has to be used within a year because they're still arranging for childcare. They're still dealing with life, that's what this is about. And I just think it's one thing to to have a dedicated employee, but it's another thing to have an employee who's dedicated that is not reaping benefit that they can get almost anywhere else, right? And I I've been to plenty of meetings and sets and watch YouTube and we talk about, hey, we need to raise the salary just a little bit so we can keep them going from here. We need to raise the salary to keep them going from there. But there's more to a job and job satisfaction than the paycheck. Paycheck pays the bills, but that is not quality of life. And I'm I'm concerned after a meeting with employees that we do not have those things in place.
At all.
Well, well. I'm I'm not sure you were.
Well, that's what we're here to talk about, right?
So, go ahead, I'll let you.
No, I'm just saying, that's what that's what I learned, you know, and that's what my concern is. And I said, hey, we need to figure out where we're at and what what we can do.
Now, now, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong. All right, so each employee gets annual leave, bills, vacation time.
Right.
All right, and then we have short-term disability.
If they decide to pay for it themselves.
So we don't pay for that?
We do not.
All right, so typically what the, I know with the state does it. The company I work for does it. And I assume that we did, but typically how how that works is, you know, everybody gets FMLA. All right, so if you gotta be out for extended time, because I think you gotta be careful of narrowing it down to saying, well, when you, you have a child, you can be out there. Because, you know, I might be an example, I have a child, I might have another issue. So I think what they've done is they've narrowed it down to, a lot of corporations have done this. They go, okay, you you have FL, FLMA up for up to twelve weeks, you can take that. And I think in the long run, if we looked at the models of it, and I think, and I asked this question to my corporate, well, how did we get to there? And they said, well, it was cheaper for us to pay all employees short-term insurance. So more events were covered for those employees if they needed to be off. So basically, what happens is through FMLA is you have to exhaust your vacation time and your sick time. And then you apply for your FMLA with short-term disability. You can make sixty percent of your salary and you can be out up to twelve weeks.
That's what you do at your company.
Right, well, and that's what the state of Georgia does. They provide short-term disability for all their employees. Because when when I asked, because I, because I seen this, I'm like, well, you know, then I heard, I asked the question, what's going on? Why, is there a problem? Because we have never heard this. And then so I I started talking to the HR director with my company. And and she, her thing was, well, James, we didn't wanna say, hey, we we weren't gonna tell a guy that was fifty years old, well, you you don't get this extra time here. So we 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 pulled it and we looked at it and we said, hey, we're paying everybody short-term disability. You can take up twelve weeks off after you exhaust these things. For whatever purpose that may be, your your position is protected and you still make an income.
So that's what that's what FMLA is, right? FMLA is Federal Medical Leave Act, right? And that just protects your job. That, all that is is saying, you still have a job. When when you come back.
The the short-term disability is what pays.
Right, and so. And I know in some companies, you know, you have to pay, the employee has to pay a certain amount of their paycheck to get short-term disability and long-term disability. And maybe if it's a salaried employee, it might incorporate into that. You don't have to make a payment. It's it's different all over the place. I I I personally don't think FMLA is an answer for maternity leave. That is like one of the biggest things that happens in a family, you know, is the birth of a child. It is a significant event, and it may happen multiple times, in the lifetime, but in every case, a new child is a significant event. And it it comes with added care. It comes with added cost. And to tell someone to, you have FMLA, your job is still being here, you can get back. And they need four weeks, six weeks, twelve weeks, whatever the company or organization decides is of maternity leave. If they're not getting paid, that is incredible extra burden to have a family. And it, that is not an uncommon thing in in corporate America is to pay people a maternity leave or a paternity leave or to pay them a bereavement leave. To tell, to tell an employee, I'm really sad to hear that your your mother passed away. But if you put in vacation, you can go to the funeral. I mean, we're not gonna say that, right? Why why would anybody ever say that? So to not have a leave policy that pays some some minuscule amount of time for for bereavement, I just can't comprehend that. So I I think we need to look at it. I think what we have now is, by all accounts, not where we need to be. And I'm not saying we need to be here or there, but I'm saying I think we need to come up with some proposals and and weigh them. You know, there's no big cost. I don't think there's a, there's not a payroll cost. There's not a payroll cost. There is a, there is a workload cost.
Production cost.
Right, there's a workload cost. And I understand in some, some departments. And I understand in some, some departments, maybe there's only two or three people there, right? And so that could be a burden. But in most cases, you know, six to nine months ahead of time that this is gonna happen. So you can, you can think about it ahead of time, how you would deal with it, right?
Sometimes you gotta, I mean, the woman's gonna have to go bed rest before.
Yeah, it could be. And that's, FMLA is there to protect their, their job. You just, you just can't let people go because they're having a child, that's, that's not allowed by law. So, you know, I have ideas how I think it should be. But again, I'm not one who says, you know, it gotta be this way. But I think we need to come up with some proposals. I, I do not think we should look at cost. I think we should look at quality of life, employee satisfaction. I don't know if we do any pulses around here to survey like how happy are our employees? But it's a, it's a real thing. Is, Chris, you're like, I'm gonna say something, don't be, I, 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 I might be a little bit too passionate about this. And y'all.
How much time do we have on the board at this present time? About any bereavement time?
Not, no paid bereavement time.
Okay, so it should be.
If they are paid, they have to use their own leave.
Most places you go, you have three days.
You have three days, we got three days. Every employee gets it, every calendar, every year.
Well, I got, I got three for a three-day bereavement right here.
Yeah, I mean, you get three days per calendar year for bereavement.
So that is, that's.
We just require them to take leave when they do it in our policy.
But, but actually you can't say three days per calendar year. God be, if you have two days.
But, but it can't be your aunt, you ain't seen her thirty years.
So that's what I said, there's a policy, you have a policy. And it's usually, it's usually a direct family member?
Mother, father, brother, sister.
I think we got. Maybe I, maybe I need to restate that. Our policy is three days per leave.
Right, right. And ours is, ours is direct family or local parent. Someone who raised you, that, that might not have been your mom.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I can have our HR director tell you which family members qualify under the current policy.
So this is part of what we need to look at as well. We have it listed as.
And this is, the, the, the full copy of this is in your, in your pack?
Immediate family is members of the employee's family to include mother, father, sister, brother, spouse, child, mother-in-law, and father-in-law. So, I mean, that, while we, we probably need to include something of, um, you know, maybe ste- stepparents or, you know.
So I would, I would not. I would say if they had the name parent or brother in.
It's on the back.
It's, it's a brother. I don't care if it's a half-brother or step-brother, you know, it's family, in my mind.
And that's the way.
Because there's a lot of blended families.
Yeah, and, and that is, that is part of what needs to be looked at with the whole thing.
Yeah.
And a lot of places will improve a grandchild also.
Yeah, that's a tough, that's tough.
Yeah. The, the leave itself, bereavement, the definition of a family, there was just a lot, a lot wrong with, with the leave policy, so. But the ultimate goal is to, new hires coming in, fresh off the street, do not get vacation leave until they've been here one year. And that is the ultimate goal, is to adjust how we accrue as well, as part of the leave situation.
So, I mean, I don't think we're gonna solve anything here today. We, we might solve bereavement, we might can move forward with bereavement really quick. But I think we need to come up with some proposals for maternity leave, and maternity leave. And for annual leave, you work for corporate America too. So for us, it's a six-month. At six months, you get the half, half a year's worth of your, whatever you event how to. And it's not, so I think it's, at, at a year, you get two weeks of vacation in the company I work for. So at six months, they give you one week vacation. You don't get anything until you hit six, you gotta make the probationary period. So, but we do, we do, we do do what we call scheduled time off, right? Where, you know, Chris could come and say, hey, I, my brother's getting married and I need to take a, a week to go to Las Vegas or whatever it is. And, you know, I don't have any vacation. I could still give him what we call scheduled time off where he's allowed to go, he's not gonna get a paycheck. But, you know, that's just taking care of.
We do have that.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
But to be paid.
I'm more aggressive. Because it's recruiting, getting good people, it's just, you, you start through vacation time, day one.
Yeah.
And by the end of your ninety-day probation, you got three days vacation. But that, that's.
I'm open to.
That, that's, that's really aggressive, but we had a real problem recruiting and retaining. We, we had really, but, uh, you know, I, I don't know where you, I guess my, my suggestion on that other thing was, and I know the state uses it, I think they're in kind of agree, the school, the teacher, the, the school, local state, schoolteachers have used this, and, and is that the FMLA, if, if, and we may need to look at the cost, but that, if we're able to provide short-term disability, that, that can help us in not, we, we got to take off the binders. That can help us in our insurance rates, our workers' time, all sorts of things. If we look at providing that short-term disability to our employees, it covers so many bases. Because if, if, if somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, my father just passed away, I, you know, I, I, I'm, I've took this time off, I gotta make some arrangements for my mother, I gotta look after her, then they're able to still draw a check after that, but you have to go through that process of exhausting your time. But a- after you exhaust that time, you still get paid, but you only get paid about sixty percent of what your, 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 your normal salary is.
So is that still considered short-term disability?
It's not dispersing though. It, 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 it has to be some type of illness to the employee themselves that's causing them not to be able to work.
I see what you're saying, I, I see what you're saying. And then, if the, the short-term disability is not gonna, you know, cover you unless you're actually injured.
Right.
You know, I have heard of you, of companies using short-term disability in conjunction with just straight PTO, not distinguishing between sick and vacation.
Well.
So. I was finished.
But if you, but, but if you're in, if, 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 if you're in a pregnancy, that qualifies for short-term disability. Because I, I, I learned that from my daughter. Uh, and, and, and she was being paid by the state at that time, and she had to, and have a choice. She had newborn, she had to be off. And she was able to have, at least have a income.
Because most places you have, uh, through PTO time, where you do accrue first day that you start working. Let's say for instance, if you went on a job for a year, you may accrue, I'm gonna say, eight hours of PTO time per month. Been on a job for five years, you may get sixteen hours of PTO time per month. But you also have a cap on that. You can accrue that time up to, say, two hundred and forty hours, you can keep annual leave and use it as you need it.
And that is similar to what I had kind of done before, just different counties. We, we kind of did, you know, a presentation on that. It, I, I don't remember if it was, you know, it was kind of com- combining our sick and vacation time, what it would have been. But we were looking to do an accrual each month, just to make that part more of a feeling. And then, um, day one or thirty days or whatever.
And then what you have, there'll be a separation between PTO time and major disability time. It will be separate.
Oh, okay. So how, how would that?
So you would have to use, I'm gonna say, forty hours of PTO time before it go into the major disability time.
So is that something set aside?
It was, it's separate.
So the regular employees would accrue that, or is that?
They would, they would also.
Okay.
What are our current, what's our current policy on employee accrue, uh, sick time?
Sick leave is after you've been employed one month, you start accruing sick leave.
How much was the max?
Eight hours.
What was the max?
You can keep up to four eighty.
Four hundred and eighty, wow.
That's twelve weeks.
Disability right there. But then, then with PTO, you're gonna accrue up to, say, two hundred and forty hours of accrue.
In the corporate world, you're gonna lose, you lose it, but it does, you, you can back up to one point. It goes to what they say, the back of the car.
And see, the four eighty was, the reason behind that was for twelve weeks of family medical leave. If, if you weren't paid, you had it dained. Some people only has four, four hours instead of four hundred eighty. But, you know.
That's complicated.
But I think we, I think what we can do, and our question is, do you want to see it in the next work session? Do you want to see a draft? Or do you wanna, do you want us to go ahead and present something to you at, at the next meeting that has different components to it?
Need options, you know?
I think, I think, I think we could go with bereavement right away, right? I think we can go bereavement right away, and I think we should come back to a work session. Three days paid bereavement for immediate family members as, as we. Um, and then come back to another work session with some options of how we can intermingle these different buckets to give our employees a benefit that's meaningful.
Absolutely.
One of, one of our, we call them our sister counties because they're like, like us in budget size, employees, square mile, just about, so Morgan County, they just went through with a consultant to completely revamp their entire PTO system. And we have, we have obtained copies of what they got and had begun to begin.
A couple of their things are from it, so, but, I mean.
But it did include that catastrophic leave that Commissioner Biggs was talking about. And that was not a straight, um, if I have a cold, I can't use that. I have to be on, I have to have my lady use it, you know, otherwise it's PTO.
Right, use some options. Use some options.
Yeah, I think we're all open to doing something to make it better.
Absolutely, and, and that is the goal behind it. We, we wanna draw in good, quality people and have them value our benefits and also keep our current employees happy.
All right.
Excellent.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We are.
Now, how about vacation time? How, how long can you keep your vacation time?
Well, right now we have limits, so you're only, depending on the, the years of service, you can keep a certain amount per year. So, um, like five to nine years, you can only keep a hundred and twenty hours. Now, at the time when you leave, you do have the option to be paid. So that is incentive to, to save some of it. But sick leave is not, you know, we pay eight hours per year of service. If, you know, that can be adjusted as well, so.
Time over, so you can use it with a max person having to worry about it using it before the end of the year itself.
Well, if you're gonna look at this, go ahead, you know, topless, go ahead, look at the, the, the vacation, you know. At least we can hear it, we, we don't have to say we're gonna change it and give us not, you know. We don't, by the way, we'll talk about it, let's just cover it all and.
I agree.
Move on.
We'd love to do it.
Okay. All right, um, try to move on to the next item is a, a discussion of a county safety and health advisory board. This is my idea. Um, I know we have boards and we have problems getting people on the boards. But this particular board is something I would like, I think we wouldn't have a problem getting people on to. We might have to turn people away, because there's a lot of people interested in this. And what I want to do is establish a board that does not make any policy, but can make some recommendations for different issues that may arise, right? Uh, one thing that I think we need to address in the county is county-wide fire protection. And when I say county-wide fire protection, I'm not saying we have to have a county fire department. I'm not saying anything. I'm saying I think we owe it to our constituents to make sure that we are doing the absolute best that we can do for them when it comes to fire protection. And I don't know enough to say which way we should go or what we should do. And, but I know that there are people in the community who do have a wealth of experience in firefighting, EMS, and those type of things. And I would like for us to create a board that we can give tasks to, right? Like, I would like, can, what are the options for long-term fire protection in the county, right? Maybe, maybe in some place in the future, two years, five years, ten years, there's a county fire department, right? As the county grows, as we bring in more industry, as we bring in more neighborhoods, developments, right? All that is a demand, right? How are we thinking about that? And how are we going to be ready when the time comes? And so I would like to bring together volunteers to look at our, our fire, our EMS. You know, I got other ideas. I want someone looking at homeless, that's why I got help on here. You know, and just to be able to, to work group kind of stuff and, and give us ideas. You know, and so, you know, and maybe they just come to see us once every six months or whenever they have something, they think they got an aha moment. But I, you know, I've had people reach out to me and they're concerned about this and that. And so my thought was we could create a board, we could give over the fire protection issue, right? At some point, we'll have an EMS contract up for review. If there is, if they are paramedics and firefighters and nurses and stuff on this panel, maybe they should look at it and give us some, you know, professional expertise. So that was my thought, and I'm open to your thoughts, ideas, concerns with that idea.
My input would be, just like we did with our rec advisory committee, make their charge very specific.
Yeah, I think you have to.
Very specific.
Create a, you create a board.
Yeah, they're not exploratory.
Right, right, yes.
Okay, I get you.
But, but, but also, I, you know, I say this every time we talk about creating a board. I, I remind, this board, that's what people elected us to do. They didn't elect us for, we're to delegate out this, delegate out this, delegate out that. They expect us to make these decisions. And I get it, this is an advisory board, but.
Someone has to know the facts.
Right, I, I know, but the first time that this advisory board delivers something to us and we don't buy it, we've just created animosity. I've seen it happen time and time again. So, uh, you know, uh, because they're gonna feel like, well, here we go. You asked us to do something, we, we went and did all this work, and now you don't agree with it.
I think it has to do with guidance, right? You, you were bored, guidance, like, I would never want you to come give me a solution.
Ever.
That's how I'm gonna beauty.
Well, you can give me, you can give me solutions, right? Like, like what we're asking from HR. We're not asking her, give us, it's gotta be twelve of this and six of this. And give me, how can we address this problem, right? That's what I'm asking for. Give me some options so I can weigh the options, and I can use screening criteria. It costs this much, that one's off the table, right? Because I don't have the money, right? I can use evaluation criteria where this is more important than that, right? And so, but some of these problems are big, right? And my calendar is really full, I don't know how y'all's calendar is, but there's a lot of things I would love to be able to dig into. And I can't do it, and I don't think you can do it, we all have jobs. And, and, but we owe it to our constituents to. to not wait until it's a, a big problem, right? And we know that, uh, we, we know growth is coming, right? We, we know we have proposals for, uh, industry development. We know we have proposals for neighborhoods, right? All of that is gonna create a demand on public services, which is what we're here for, right? And so, um, we have a staff, but the staff is only so big as well, right? And so, that, that's just my thoughts.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Are you talking like, like just putting this out here and having vacancies? Uh, just putting it out, hey, if you wanna apply, we got this board, we bring you.
Yeah, we, 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 we pay a charter. We say, we, we're looking for this type of expertise. We're looking for some, um, public safety officers. We're looking for some fire EMT, uh, nurse, you know, these type of skill sets who are willing to look at data, right? Uh, some people understand what ISO ratings are and how ISO ratings are, are developed and what can affect an ISO rating. I know in general, I don't know, I don't know how you go from a seven to a five to a three. I know that, I know that cities have a three. And everybody in the city pays a lower homeowner's insurance than everybody in the county, right? And so I would like for everybody to have lower homeowner's insurance, especially me.
I, I, may I use that as a specific example about, uh, so, having been a big part of building a fire department from scratch in another community, what I can tell you about my experience with that, they based almost all of their decisions on ISO ratings, which me personally, I think is a, a terrible mistake, because what we need to, you know, what you need to ask yourself is, and I'm just using this as an example, so we would try to decide what their charge would be.
Right.
You know, an ISO rating, it, it, you know, that's, uh, people and their property, okay? So what really we had in the community at the time, we always had the ability to save people, you know? And we were focused on saving people, and we would save as much property as we could.
Right.
So when you build ISO into the equation, sure, yes, you know, there are some metrics where your homeowners will come down, but your, your payments to the government will go up. And in, and in that case, in the program that we built, they didn't offset, as a matter of fact, it was actually more expensive to the homeowner. And a lot of the homeowners, by the time we got there, were not very happy about it. So, you know, I would just use that as an example to say, you know.
That's why all the smart people tell me, because I don't know.
Yeah, so.
I'm just gonna put, I, 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 I'm just gonna put this out here, you know, uh, and, uh, I've lived here my entire life. We got probably some of the best volunteers of any county that, that I'm aware of that surround us. Uh, our firefighters are serious about what they do. Our volunteers are, uh, and, uh, they're protective of their area and their, their equipment and, uh, and, and their, and their community. And the quickest way to stir horns, man, right? But this is a work session, so I'm gonna say this. And if anybody disagrees, I want you to speak up, and if you don't, I'm gonna know it because you disagree.
Okay.
You mess with our volunteer fire department, you get, you don't, if they don't have input and you take other people from in the community to start making those decisions, you're making a grave mistake, grave mistake.
So why wouldn't we have foster fire people in the?
You, you, you would, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, is you gotta get the people in those departments, the chiefs, involved in this. Cause the chiefs lead their departments.
Right.
And, 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 and the last thing you wanna do is make them feel like they're not part of the, the season making.
They need to be part of it, because nobody's talking about doing away with.
No, I, I understand that, but, but like, once again, I'm saying they're protected of their areas and their equipment. And, uh,
And they should be, and they should be proud. I mean, I, I just saw the day, like, thirsting, I don't know if you saw them, where they were popping the cars open. They do like some really incredible.
But they, they, I, I just, you know, and if we get some people on a board that don't understand and don't know the history of what, uh, our, how our community's been protected in the past, uh, you know, it's just, uh, it, it's gotta be real clear. And, uh, you know, uh, but we'll get to decide who those people are, and we shouldn't make, we shouldn't take that into consideration.
But I, but I would certainly, like we did with the rec advisory board, give them policy guidance. It's like, so if ISO ratings are an important thing to this board, then you would give them that guidance, or, or a study of such, or whatever it is. Or, you know, if, or even a higher level, it's like, you know, i- is your focus property, people, both, or, you know, and, and how much does budget come into play? Give them a little guidance as to what direction they should go.
And I, and I think, you know, at first, it may be just, they're not advising us or anything, they're just telling us where we're at.
Doing, doing a?
Yeah, this, this is how we look today, and this is what we're capable of today. Cause, um, I mean, I've visited a number of fire departments and, and I'm impressed, right? But I don't know, that's all I know, but that's all I've ever seen. I don't know, right? But again, fire is one, one aspect, right? Uh, and, and closely tied to fire is emergency medical, right? So basically, it's one of the same. Um, and so, I don't know when our contract renews, uh, but I think if we have a body who has expertise in that field, I would like to hear their thoughts. It doesn't have, you know, it might be work session thoughts, but they get to sit around and, and share with us of what their thoughts are and how, how we can do better, how we can save money, how we can save lives. Yeah, I certainly don't wanna create anything that's gonna be an adversarial type of item anymore. I want something that can feed us information, help us be, be smarter about where we are as a community. Uh, because that's not my expertise at all.
I, I, I'd like to make a recommendation. I, I think we could start out by, you know, having a work session where we have all our, our chiefs here from the fire department. And we invite our EMS, we, and we, and we have to sit down, but we just don't do that. And we hear from them directly. Now, I know individually.
You may have to choose them.
We, we, I mean, it, it doesn't have to be all, I mean, I'm just saying, we, we, as a board, we've never done.
Yeah.
And, and, and we need to give them, you know, their opportunity. And they, I know they speak to these person individually, I think, to me. I, I feel like I have a good relationship with both departments in my district. Uh, but we, we, you know, uh, I, I, I say, a- a- as a start to this process of looking at this, is that we may find out if we just communicate with, with, with the folks that are in place, we may not need an advisory board. We got, we gotta ask for advice to get it, and, and currently, we're not doing it. Uh, and that, that's not your fault, or, or, or your fault, it's, it's, but now it's our fault.
Yeah, I would just say, as, as a candidate, I went around and I was learning, and what I was learning was, I don't know. I, I don't know, and so, um, and I'm the kind of person that, uh, you know, if I wanna dig into something, if something interests me, I'll dig into it and I'll, I'll come and explore that, right? But when you're in charge, you can't be an expert on everything, right? And so it's, it's always good, uh, if you have a push process instead of a pull process, right? I would, I like for people to feed me information that helps me make decisions, rather than me, uh, hunting and maybe missing a piece of information that would have helped me make a better decision. That, that's how I think, just, anyway, but I'm, I'm with you. We can set up a, uh, maybe a Tuesday uh, work session, uh, that is EMS and fire, and have some conversations, and maybe it can paint, help us paint the picture where we are. And, and give us some input. I'm, I'm with that.
Well, I, you know, the thing is, is if we did it in the morning, both of them people are at work.
Well, Tuesday's at our afternoon.
Right, we, we would need to do it in afternoon, uh, you know. Uh, but that's just a recommendation I got, that, that before we just decide, hey, we're gonna do this board, what's it gonna look like? Let's call, call those guys.
Yeah, we can get the fire chief, the EMH chief, uh, EMS.
Right.
Bring them up, yeah. It's kinda like we, we, we talked to the staff and we learned some stuff, and like, hey, there's some things we need to address. We, we wouldn't have known if we hadn't had that meeting. I'm open. Alright.
Let, let me ask this, is there, is there something you wanna see from the staff with regards to this issue?
Oh, probably not at the time, when?
Just an appointment, uh, just to when we're gonna, when we can coordinate a meeting, and, uh, maybe the EMH chief can watch over.
And then, and then we gotta make some good guidelines.
Well, let's, let's hear it first.
Yeah, I think we, we, we may find out that we, 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 we got a board already. We, yeah, we may find that out.
But, we got some boards that are a whole different universe than we want to be.
Right, well, that's to his point, it's, it's about communication, you know, so. Alright. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, board appointments. I know we have had a couple of openings out there for a while, and we have applicants who have applied. Is this something we wanna talk about here, or do we wanna go into the next session, after we do closing comments and talk about, uh, those positions?
I would say, yeah.
We're gonna talk about statistics, well, because I think an individual, I prefer that we don't have any.
I, I got to go ahead and.
Okay, well, that's the last item.
I thought we were going into executive session.
Oh, well, I'm saying, we, we will go into, we got closing comments, if anybody has closing comments, then we can go.
The only thing I got, I got a couple things, is where we had on the rapid ball cord leak.
So, uh, I have reached out, and we're using, um, we, we didn't seem to be able to, uh, get much traction um, with one of our engineering firms. So I reached out to the firm that helped us, they actually started working with us on the civic center roof project. So they, they helped us with senior center roof. They're looking at, the, Kenner manager said, the leak in the auditorium. They're also doing work to help us fix issues we have with the archives. So I've reached out to them. So, they, uh, they deal with, um, low-grade water penetration, so they've taken that on to help us. They, like many others, seem to be just extraordinarily stretched and, uh, have lots of big projects going on. But they, uh, have said they are gonna get to it, come down and start a preliminary assessment of what's going on. Take us through the process. So, uh, all of these things with these facilities is just taking quite a bit of time, and it's just, it's just what's going on in the world apparently, you know, with people that can do that kind of work and, uh, getting on their, their timeline. But it is an issue because, um, you know, we're all tired of it, and I, I think, um, I think there may be some, you know, additional plans, they wanna use that space for other things, and we can't allow them to use that until we get to water penetration, if you saw.
I know it's probably been over a month ago, I would see pictures from a constituent that, uh, showed, uh, they were out there digging up inside the building, uh, doing some waterproofing and some, uh, backfilling.
I'm not aware of that, um, a month ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know they were doing any digging.
Yeah, that's, that was right next to the building, something that we had suggested. And, uh, and, uh, basically put some waterproofing, uh, some poly and some rock in there uh, to, uh, to try to get that to drain away from the building or not seep in. I don't know, and, and maybe that, I don't know who that, if, I, I made an assumption, okay? We know what assumption, but I, I thought it was probably her group that was doing that, but I, I didn't know.
Thought we had that discussion with the E and didn't see we did.
We did, but I didn't.
I don't know if they, they ain't got something qualified.
I'm not aware that they did anything, so I'm sorry.
I don't think that, I don't think.
I got flat-footed here. I think, I think.